Welcome to the first zoning board of appeals meeting for 2017. The first order of business is to elect a chairman. So I will take nominations for chairman.
I'd like to nominate Joseph Tuzola for chairman.
I'll second that.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Mr. Tuzola was nominated. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Mr. Tuzola, floor's yours. Thank you, board members, for asking me to represent you again as your chairman, and it is an honor to do so. At this time, we have nominations for secretary. Mr. Soto.
I would like to nominate John Vassino.
I'll second that. Are there any other nominations for secretary? Any other nominations for secretary? All in favor, Mr. Vassino? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Vassino.
Thank you. Thank you, fellow board members and Mr. Chairman.
Just a couple of things before we start. I want to mention that Howard Haberman was our secretary on this board for 16 years, and he's moved into a different position with the city. So I just wanted to mention Howard tonight. Our board members, he had told me that he's, of course, enjoyed working with everyone, and he will miss being here. We're also awaiting a new appointment replacing Howard. This evening, we'd like to welcome alternate Jane Huber-Happy. Welcome to our board. Mr. Robert Thomas has been reappointed. And as Mr. Harris had started, it stated when we started this meeting, this is the zoning board of appeals, January 2017 meeting. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to lead with the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuzola.
Here.
Ms. Verante, here. Mr. Soto.
Here.
Mr. Vassino.
Here.
Mr. Dubois.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Huber-Happy.
Here.
Thank you.
Mr. Dubois, we need you, we need your vote this evening.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Also present this evening are Meg Harris, our, Stephen Harris, I'm sorry, our zoning officer, and Meg Green, our recording secretary. If you feel that there's someone on this board that might be a conflict of interest to your application, please let us know. With that, Mr. Secretary.
I might want to just note that item five of the 10 days postponed.
Okay, yes, one thing here. If you're here for number five, 229 Bridgeport Avenue, that's been postponed. Thank you.
Item number one, 622 Gulf Street, MPB 81/706/3, R18, Kevin Crusaden, Esquire attorney for G.H. Ward and successors, owner. Proposed lot one, vary section 2.5.4 to form new lot on lot already occupied by building. Vary section 2.5.5, lot area to 20,110 square feet where 43,560 square feet required. Lot width to 64 where 150 required. Access width to 10 where 25 required. No frontage where frontage is required. Lot that may not be considered generally rectangular in shape. Vary section 3.1.4, side yard setback to 11 where 15 is required. Proposed lot two, vary section 2.5.4 to form new lot on lot already occupied by building. Vary section 2.5.5, lot area 27,090 square feet where 43,560 square feet required. Lot width to 92 feet where 150 required. Access width to 10 feet where 25 required. No frontage where frontage required. Lot that may not be considered generally rectangular in shape. Vary section 3.1.4, side yard setback to 11 feet where 15 required. And proposed lot three, vary section 2.5.4 to form new lot on lot already occupied by building. Vary section 2.5.5, access width to 10 feet where 25 required. No frontage where frontage is required. Lot that may not be considered generally rectangular in shape.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Happy New Year. My name is Kevin Crusaden. My office is at 26 Cherry Street. I'm the attorney for the applicant, Mr. George Ward, who's also the owner of the property. Mr. Ward's here with us tonight. Also with us is Matt Duchesne, the professional engineer from Malona McBroom, who, Malona McBroom did the survey and prepared these plans. The property was posted with two signs, although only one sign was actually required. We posted on both Old Field Lane and Gulf Street. Proper notices had been mailed, and that information with the affidavit's been turned over to the clerk, Meg Green. I wanted to, it's, I'll be as brief as possible, but there is a significant number of variances. And as I go through the memo, I also provided most of the members, I apologize, I think I was one or two short with the copies, supporting evidence of deeds, the assessor's cards that have the years that the existing structures were built, and some other information that I can, that I'll, I can talk about as I go through this presentation tonight. So when looking at the variances requested and what Mr. Vassino had just read, seems like a lengthy request. However, when you boil it down to the fact that this is all in relation to a request for rear lots except for two of the variances, which are side yard setback variances from 11 feet to, from 15 feet to 11 feet for two of the existing houses that are in the rear of the lot, it's not really as substantial as it seems. These are existing houses that have been on the property, and we'll go over the history and the history of the property in a moment, but they've, they've been there for a significant period of time. We're not asking to change the location of those. We're just asking to actually, I guess, make the property more compliant with today's zoning regulations. And I know Stephen Harris and I disagree with, disagree on that, but we'll go through it, and then you can make your decisions. So when I talked about the history of the lot, this is, I thought that based on the number of variances requested and the maps that are involved, having a slideshow or PowerPoint presentation tonight would be a little bit helpful. Hopefully, you can see it rather than looking at the smaller board. We also have some other overheads brought by Matt Duchesne. This is a, what's probably, looks like a survey from 1918. This is the first map that we have a copy of. There's an earlier map referenced of 1917, but we, that was not recorded on the, in the town clerk's office. So if you take a look, that's the house that fronts on Gulf Street. There's another house here, or that's a barn that eventually became a house. This actually says "house" on it. You can't really read the writing from there. There's some other structures on the property. There's chicken coops, which is, half of that structure is still there. And there's another house over here that burned down in the early 80s, and Mr. Ward's here, he can talk about that and what happened and why it wasn't rebuilt. This house here has, I think, since been knocked down. That's no longer part of this lot. This lot shows at 4.2 acres originally, and now it's down around 3.7 acres or so. Probably, this piece was probably carved off. This is the access from Gulf Street to this lot that's always existed. You don't see the access except right here from the access from Old Field Lane. And obviously, the other houses that have a right-of-way on that access aren't shown on this particular drawing. This is the current survey, prepared by Malona McBroom, shows the development around the property. Oops, sorry, go back. Shows the development around the property on Ranch Road. Still, we did not survey the other lots, but you can see the right-of-way, which is the access from Old Field Lane for these existing houses in the back here and for the proposed house, if you were to see fit to approve this variance. By the way, this is not an application for a variance for subdivision approval. We would still need to go to the planning and zoning board for subdivision and site plan approval. This is a variance, we need these variances prior to going to that board. Otherwise, if we went to that board, they would say, "You're not compliant, and we can't grant the subdivision." But this just shows you since 1918 what's happened in this area. Ranch Road's been fully developed. Gulf Street's different. The elevation is probably different than back then. This section of the parcel, you'll see that grass strip on Gulf Street as you're heading towards Welsh's Point. It's on the right-hand side, it's on, on the sound. That's also a part of this lot. The elevation of Gulf Street, this is important for the access. The elevation of Gulf Street in front of the house, the existing house, is eight feet. The first floor elevation of the house that fronts on Gulf Street, I believe, is, I have it in the memo here, but I think it's 30 feet. Let me just be correct on that. 30.8 feet. So there's this, and you've, you're familiar with the property. You live in Milford, you drive by Gulf Beach. There's a, there's a, there's a wall, a retaining wall that was redone recently very, very nicely. Mr. Ward, I think probably, I didn't do a full title search with, with respect to Gulf Street. I think he probably gave an easement or was part of that process for the sidewalk and the, and the wall. He could, he could speak to that a little bit more. But you can tell just from driving by that property, the access is not easy to the front of the property. Because, due to the elevation. This is the proposed site plan. You have copies of that in your file, I believe, or with you tonight. It shows the, it shows the existing house, existing house, and then a proposed lot. Also, the, it shows the four proposed lots based on what we're asking for tonight, and that's the property as proposed. But what's important to note is that the property's not really changing, except for this one lot here, which would be a new, a new addition to the property. There's no other, as far as our variance request tonight, there's no other structures proposed. These are structures that have been in existence since, I think, the field card says 1930, this is 1870. These are 1935. I think one of them was a house from the beginning. Another one became a house in, at least in the 50s or somewhere along those lines. Once again, the access, and you have the table there that shows what the zoning requirements are. So other than, and I mentioned it earlier, but just to reiterate, other than, if these three lots were on city street, we'd be asking for two variances, two side yard setback variances because of the existing houses. I'll speak in a few minutes briefly about why the design is proposed this way, and there's been, there were some other discussions about proposing the design a different way in order to meet the regulations, but it really came up with a funny-looking plan and didn't, wasn't really practical or make sense. And I understand that you could probably say, "Well, yeah, but that's why you're here, because you're not on a city street." But one of the hardships that we're claiming tonight is the fact that the property has existed with those structures since at least the early 1900s, if not before, with that, with that access. So as the property sat there, basically in the same state, maybe with some minor boundary line, you know, surveys, changes over the years, the city of Milford grew around it, the Gulf Street neighborhood grew around it, Ranch Road was, was put into place, the regulations were developed, and the subdivision regulations were developed. So this lot's never been subdivided before. So that's, that's, that's one of the hardships that we're talking about, is that the lot has remained unchanged and in-state as the regulations have changed and the neighborhood has developed around it. Now, this is a little bit more close-up view of the same, this proposed site plan. Or really, it's to really show the variances, it's not really a site plan. This is a City Milford GIS overhead view of the property, and you can see the property outline. It's kind of a uniquely shaped lot in the back here. It kind of kicks out, goes around, so it's hard to make it rectangular shape in dividing it up. You can see the accessway there a little bit better. That's the driveway actually off the accessway in the house on Gulf Street. It's just another photo. The reason I wanted to show this, not to be redundant, but you can see the accessway coming off Old Field Lane and the other houses that it impacts. Now, I've talked to David Sulcus about this a month or so ago. I talked to Stephen Harris probably a month or so ago, around the same timeframe. We disagree on what this accessway, what the legal requirement for this access is. The city regulations, 2.5.5, says if you have a rear lot, you need 25 feet of a private accessway. And I'm just paraphrasing. It says, it goes into a little bit more detail on that. But it doesn't say that the accessway has to be exclusive to the one lot. It doesn't say the accessway has to be held in fee simple ownership, meaning that the owner has title to that prop, that the person who benefits from the accessway has title to that property. And in fact, I did some research on that, and I'll go ahead a little bit. I put in bold the current regulation, and in your packages, the existing regulation. The current regulation says, you read down, "Or one single-family dwelling in an applicable district may be permitted on a lot of one or more acres, provided that a private means of access of at least 50 feet," that's for business or commercial, "or 25 feet in width for such dwelling, shall be provided to an accepted public street or street in an approved subdivision." The significant, not to bore you, but the significance of this regulation, when you compare it to the previous leg regulations from the 60s and 70s that I provided in your package, is that the earlier regulations were much more restrictive. It required two acres. It required 50 feet regardless of whether it was residential or commercial. And it also said exclusive or an easement. And that, that language is removed. So legally, that means that they're not talking about an exclusive fee simple access. So one of the comments on Mr. Harris's summary for the, for this evening was the fact that the legal access or the type of access is unknown. I provided copies of deeds both from Mr. Ward's property and all the adjoining, all the adjoining property owners that use that Old Field Lane access, only to show you that they, which is all public record, but only to show you that they reference the right-of-way for both themselves and for Mr. Ward, and they, they've taken title subject to that property, so it exists. Now, the 10-foot, we've asked for 10 feet instead of 25 feet, because that regulation requires 25 feet. This is just a right-of-way. It doesn't say 5 feet, 10 feet, 15 feet, 25 feet. We say 10 feet because that's the approximate width of the existing driveway, accessway that's been there. I don't know when it was paved, but the driveway's been there since at least 1918 from that map, it looks like. So we just, we, we said, "Let's, well, what's, what's the width of the driveway?" And Malona McBroom said, "It looks like it's 10 feet." So that's why we're asking for 10 feet. We've asked for more variances than I think we need to be conservative about it. For example, I think staff interprets the 25-foot accessway to mean 25 feet of frontage. However, when you, when you go back to that regulation, there's no mention of frontage in that regulation. So I don't know if that's something that's just been, I guess, a position that staff has taken over the years or, or what, but there's no, interestingly, there's no request for frontage. But we asked for that variance as well, even though I don't think we need it, because there's no requirement in the regulation. Now, not to overbore you, and I'm getting, I'm getting closer to the end, but Black's Law Dictionary defines private as "affecting or belonging to private individuals as distinct from the public generally." So what we have here is a right-of-access, I don't know how wide it is, the deeds don't say how wide it is. It's however wide the neighbors and Mr. Ward decide it is, I guess. But it's not open to the public. Only those owners have a right to it, the people that have it within, in their deeds. So the legal requirements to grant a variance over the, over the past few years have seen some changes. Stephen, Mr. Harris has been on top of that. There's been some negative case law towards variances in general. I don't agree with that case law. I think that eventually that'll be addressed by legislation or, or that, those cases will be overturned, if possible, or distinguished, future cases will be distinguished. But one case that hasn't changed, and I put it in your memo, is Vine versus North Branford ZBA. And in Vine, our Supreme Court held that an applicant with an application that eliminates or reduces one or more existing nonconformities, which is what the case is here, we, the existing nonconformity is we have three houses on one residential lot, satisfies the legal hardship requirement. So I know typically, when people come before you and you're looking for a legal hardship in order to decide whether you're going to grant or deny the variance, it's the size of the lot, the shape of the lot, the elevation of the lot. Well, some of that exists here. The lot's a funny shape, and it's got a unique elevation. But it's also has a nonconformity. And I think the real question for the board is, what's a more significant nonconformity? The fact that you have three residential houses on, primary uses on one residential lot? Or the fact that they're, by granting these variances, you're creating, potentially creating rear lots, or have the potential for creating rear lots, because that's not something that, that can happen through this board? So what's the, I guess, what's the lesser of the, or the better of the, of the two? In our opinion, and our position is that it's better to, to divide these, divide these houses off and have one house on, on one lot, as is required. A little bit more background on Vine. An abutting landowner appealed from decision of the, of the ZBA, this is in Branford, granting application for variance from minimum square lot requirement in a residential zone. The appellate, the appellate court reversed and remanded, and the zoning board and applicant appealed. And then the Supreme Court held the applicant was entitled to the variance, given that the variance would reduce the pre-existing nonconforming use of the property to a less offensive use. Then the court says in the head notes, West Law head notes, "The relevant inquiry is not whether the lot that is the subject of the proposed variance predated the applicable zoning regulation, but whether the variance will eliminate a nonconforming use that predated the regulation." Which is, which is the case here. And if a variance will render the use of the property more conforming by allowing the property owner to create a new lot, the justification for granting the variance is no less compelling." So it's not exactly what this case is, but it's similar to it. Then there's other considerations for variance that aren't in the statute but have developed in case law over the years. Strict application for, of the regulations would cause undue hardship, which is, which is the case here. An applicant must show their property suffers an undue hardship different from other properties in the same zone. A lot of times, that's interpreted to mean different than other properties in the neighborhood or on the street. The actual law is that it's in the same zone. And in this case, this property, you can tell. Well, you can see it from this map. That's a different slide that I wanted to show you, but you can see, this is the subject property, and this is the neighborhood. So this lot is significantly different. It's one big lot with three, with three houses on it. And Vine provides an alternate, the, the holding in Vine provides an alternate means to provide, to, to provide a finding of legal hardship, and that's, that applies in this case. The hardship's unique and not shared by all properties in the zone. I think that the elevation and the drop-off and the wall when you drive by, and the way that the property's developed over the years, it definitely is unique in an R18 zone. I think it's unique in the neighborhood, and I think it's unique in the city. The application meets the uniqueness quote-unquote test. The traditional legal hardships that we talked about, the elevation of the lot, I'd mentioned the Gulf Street is at elevation eight in front of house number 622. The finished floor is at 30.8 feet. Once again, you've seen the property and the wall. The variance is not going to change the character of the neighborhood, which is something I mentioned at the very beginning of this. It's a neighborhood of single-family lots. Those houses are staying there. The only change would be an additional single-family house. It's not going to change the neighborhood. It's not going to change the act, the right, the accessway. Mr. Ward can speak to his experience. I forget how long he's owned the property, but a significant period of time, and he can tell how that accessway has been utilized over the years. The access drive's not going to change. But I think that the real evidence of meeting this test is in the neighbor support, which I find really unusual in this case. And when Mr. Ward came to talk to me about this originally, I was kind of surprised that he already had neighbors onboard with this. That's not typical for any application, really. So I've given you all letters from these folks on the right-hand side, and those are their addresses. Number four is a tenant. I just want to be clear on that. Mr. Ward couldn't get in touch with the owner of the property. Another, one of, one of the other owners on Ranch Road, Mr. Ward was unable to get in touch with. The key on the bottom of this, the solid is a neighbor letter and support. This yellow stripe, if you can see it, is these two houses. It was my understanding that these neighbors are coming to speak in favor of it tonight. I didn't want to represent that they were going to speak in favor of it unless they actually showed up and did so, so I made that a different highlight. But these are all the houses surrounding, except this one right here, which is the tenant, and this one right here, which Mr. Ward couldn't get in touch with the person. So there's a significant number of neighbors in support, which is, I think, really telling about the character that, you know, whether this is a, whether this is something that's going to be damaging to the neighborhood or not. Just, I want to go through the, see if I missed anything with respect to the package. I thought, I thought this was in the slide deck. I don't know if you have a, it's the list of variances requested. This right here. This is prepared by Malona McBroom, and it addresses the bulk standards. It does not address all the variances we requested, but it's interesting, because lot number three, which is, would be the proposed vacant lot, if it was approved by you and by planning and zoning, there, we would only need one, one variance for the lot frontage, which is once again a variance that I don't think, that's not really, it's kind of an inserted requirement that's not really, doesn't really exist. So overall, the lots are, are fairly compliant. And when you look at it this way, when you look at it from a larger view, it's not as significant number of variances as it seems from the legal notice or from the actual application. I think we overrequested those. The deeds, I do have one other letter from the owner of 612 Gulf Street stating these where Mr. 622 has a right-of-way. He, it's his understanding's been in existence for a substantial period of time, at least since the early 1900s. He does not believe George's, this variance application changes anything about the right-of-way or his property, and he has no objection to, objection to it being used for access. And that's Tom and Dorian, I'm going to mispronounce the name, Mel or Mele. I'm going to present that to the board before I close the hearing tonight. There's a photograph in there. That was the house that burned down in the early 80s. So once again, it was at one point. So, once again, there was, at one point, four houses on that lot. There's some other information from the 80s, from the zoning office and the building department I included in here, that references the four houses, just to give you some more background, that there actually were four houses on this lot at one time. And then to address Mr. Harris's administrative summary. Once again, this is not a subdivision application. There is, I mean, when somebody needs a variance prior to going to Planning and Zoning, either for a site plan or a subdivision, they come to this board. So it's not an unusual request to come here to get a variance before you can go to that board and get your approval. So the fact that these are not lots, that these are proposed lots, that's true. They're proposed. They would have to receive a variance relief from your board, and then they would have to receive subdivision and site plan approval from the Planning and Zoning Board, and go through extensive review from city engineering and all the other various city agencies, and be well-vetted prior to being approved. You know, however, they do have separate addresses. I think it's 622, 624, and 626. And the house that had burned down in the 80s was 628. There's separate files in the zoning office for these properties. There's separate files in the building department for these structures. It's all the same map block and parcel number. They're on the assessor's grand list, under one parcel number, as I said. There is, it is unusual about the elevation and topography with respect to the surrounding lots. Because when you look at, when you look at the overhead, I don't know if you can see it from there, on the left-hand side, and, you know, just basically, based on your personal experience, the elevation of that lot from the street is not the same as the other lots in the neighborhood. Real briefly, Matt Duchesne had reminded me that there was discussions, I think when Mr. Ward met with Maloney-McBroom originally, about carving up this lot into strips that had, you know, 25-foot frontage on Gulf Street. And I don't, I'm assuming that the, it probably didn't have any practical effect, and all it was doing was being designed to meet all the regulations or to come in and ask for even less variances, but to have a worse layout. Pending your questions, I don't have anything further. I'm just going to present this letter.
Questions for Attorney Crusaden. Mr. Sodan.
Question I have for you is, did you think about dividing this up equally, square-foot-wise, and maybe moving the houses to the center of the new lots? So you wouldn't be asking for so many variances?
I, you know, as often the case, the attorney comes in kind of towards the end of the project, and I get a set of plans, and then, you know, we decide whether it's something viable to go forward with or not. So I wouldn't be able to answer that question, but I'm sure Mr. Ward or Matt Duchesne could answer it, if you'd like him to answer it now.
Good evening. For the record, Matt Duchesne, professional engineer with Maloney-McBroom, located in Cheshire, Connecticut. When we originally looked at the property, we did attempt to, as Attorney Crusaden had said, minimize the number of variances associated with the property. In terms of establishing lot lines, we tried to do them such that the variance request for side lot lines was equidistant. You can kind of see that we're 11 feet away from both structures. We were attempting to keep the lot shapes generally rectangular in accordance with the regulations, while at the same time ensuring that the existing house, 622, has adequate land area. So we were trying to establish a rectangular-shaped lot, while at the same time trying to minimize the side lot line variances required. And that's why you end up with the shape and the land area that you have there for lots one and two. Attorney Crusaden had said that we are requesting lot area variances for lot one and two, and that's based upon the fact that they are rear lots, which require a full acre. We did attempt to size them such that the acreage that is represented on the plan does meet the underlying zoning of the R-18, excuse me, of the R-18 zoning district, although we still need the variance, given the fact that they are rear lots and require one full acre. Does that?
I still think you could move the houses and, you know, reconfigure the lots, so you're not asking for so much. You know, you could make the front lot a one-acre lot, and then distribute the rest, you know, equally. Houses can be moved pretty easily, I mean.
The lot lines, you mean, or?
No, move the houses themselves to the centers of the new lots, the two back houses, not the front house. And then create equal lots. And did you think about any access from that front, right-of-way, to the front house, using that for the back houses, too?
We did not come up with any layouts that utilized the existing access off of Gulf Street for the lots in the rear. That is not something that we had considered in this layout, given that the existing access is derived from Old Field Lane. We thought it made most sense to continue utilizing that access.
Well, at least a lot three, it'd be a lot shorter coming in from Gulf Street, then.
Correct, correct.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Vassino?
Lot three obviously doesn't have many variance requests, just the one for the frontage, probably for this gentleman. Yep, probably for you, sir. Thank you.
Sure.
My question was, why not combine lots one and two into one lot? Then you would eliminate the lot area square footage and the lot width variance request. So why not combine those two? And have three parcels, the existing one and two new ones.
So combine lot areas one and two and leave three as is? Is that correct, what you're stating? That would eliminate some of the variance requests, but at the same time, we would still have the existing nonconformity of two structures on one property. And I think that was the thought behind trying to put them on individual lots.
Okay, so then, the question is, which is more desirable from the zoning regulations?
Correct, correct. As Attorney Crusaden had said, we did look at numerous layout options in trying to minimize the number of variances. We had one layout that had 25-foot access strips, as Attorney Crusaden had said, out to Gulf Street, although those were pretty useless. There are lines on paper that satisfy a requirement, but aren't practical in nature. So we arrived at the layout that we are looking at tonight, thinking that that was the best compromise in terms of eliminating some nonconformities, but also, obviously, creating others, such as the side lot line variance between lots one and two.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Is there anyone else speaking in favor of this application?
Mr. Chairman, there was an email received from Mr. DeGrand, who was on the list that Attorney Crusaden displayed. It was an email.
Just real quickly, I wanted to follow up with a question Mr. Sodan had. So the access from Gulf Street, we would have a similar variance request, I think, whether we were coming in off of Old Field Lane or Gulf Street to access those lots. So I think it was six and one half dozen in the other.
Is that access from Gulf Street?
I think that, I can't read the plan from here, but I want to say it's like 12, 12 feet, maybe? Mr. Duchesne can give that information to you.
Okay, Mr. Harris, can I ask you a question, please? It was stated by Attorney Crusaden that he had to come to this board first for variances. How do we give variances on lots that are already established? It seems like, you know, would the planning and zoning subdivide this property?
My rule in this is, as technical advisor, to advise this board as to the regulations and the law. If you haven't already read the DPLU administrative summary for this, I would encourage everybody to take a minute and read that.
Where would that be?
It lays out technical things I really think need to be covered. This is an unusual application, in my opinion. What this is, with all respect to Attorney Crusaden, this represents a subdivision by variance. We're talking about one lot of record, 622 Gulf Street, that has three single-family houses on it. It's illegal, nonconforming, three-family use on this lot. Proposed lots one, two, three, and remaining land of applicant don't exist. They have no map block and lot number. They are not on the assessor's grand list. They exist only on this map. The whole thrust behind variances, from a state level, from a local level, variances contemplate actual parcels that exist on the ground in reality. So maybe perhaps on your house, Mr. Vassino, you might want to ask for variance to build this, that, or the other thing. You have a lot of record. These proposed lots are not lots of record. And I could find no authority in the local regulations and no authority in state law that permits variances for proposed lots, as opposed to actual lots. So in my opinion, as CEO, I have to advise you that I don't think you have the legal authority to subdivide this land. I know Attorney Crusaden doesn't call it a subdivision. But really, that in fact it is. You grant variances for these proposed lots, then a subdivision becomes a perfunctory matter, because it is what it is. They already have the size and shape that they will have. You know, if this board approves this, they will have, these lots will all have the size and shape and access already in place. So if they go to the Planning and Zoning Board, it's a rubber stamp. Because the Board, Planning and Zoning Board has to approve subdivisions that meet zoning. So if you grant variances for these lots that don't exist, then go to the Planning and Zoning Board, I believe that they will have to approve them. That's why, in my opinion, Attorney Crusaden is coming here first. He can't go to the Planning and Zoning Board with this application, because it doesn't meet the subdivision regulations. But you don't need to know that. That's not your purview. I just want to zero in on just those, you know, two things. There's nothing in local regulations that give you the authority to grant the variance for a proposed lot. And there's nothing in state law that I could find, I couldn't find any case law that dealt with this whole issue at all. So my advice is, you don't have the authority to hear, to really to hear this.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
May I just respond to that at one point, with respect to the law? So Section 2.54 of the Milford zoning regulations reference new lots. You can read it just as well as I can. But it says, "No lot shall be formed from part of a lot already occupied by a building," which in this case, this lot's already occupied by several buildings. "Unless such building, all yards and open spaces connected therewith, and the remaining lot comply with all the requirements in the regulations for the zoning district." One of our variance requests tonight is a variance from this regulation. So there is a regulation that discusses it. We're asking for a variance from that regulation as part of the overall general application. So I would respectfully disagree with Mr. Harris that in the, I guess, in the negative or the adverse, there's a regulation that says that it's not allowed, but it's a regulation that you, as a zoning board of appeals, can vary. And this is unique, you know, this uniquely applies to this particular request, because you have a lot with several different structures on it. And many times, we've come to the zoning board of appeals prior to site plan or subdivision approval, because you need a variance relief for one thing or the other. It's just the way to do it. I think that it's the best way to do it, because if the ZBA is not going to grant the variance relief, then why go forward with the time and money and expense? And it's not a rubber stamp. There's subdivision regulations that your board cannot waive or cannot grant relief on. So only the Planning and Zoning Board would be able to grant that. So it would not be a rubber stamp application.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, Section 254. If you read that, what it's really talking about is a re-subdivision of land that already has a house on it. So it's already talking about a lot of record, that somebody may have a larger piece of land. They want to chop it up into as many lots as they can legally get. But there's already a house there. Section 254 says, you can't create a new lot out of that existing lot, unless that house is positioned correctly. So it doesn't contemplate, 254 doesn't contemplate creating a lot out of whole cloth that has, you know, already has a house on it. It's already dealing with a lot of record. Probably a string of lots along a section of road that someone wants to recombine in some fashion.
Go ahead, Mr. Sodan.
Attorney Crusaden, I have another question for you. The existing house on Lot One, you're looking for 11 feet on the side. I'll call that the front-side yard. How many feet is that house off the existing rear property line there, or the side property line? It's quite a ways past the setback line. You see where I mean, on the property of Thomas and Dorian? Yeah, what, how many feet is that off the property line?
Six feet.
Six feet?
Yeah.
Now, what kind of houses are these? One-story, two-story?
I believe it's two stories. Yeah, there's photos in the assessor's cards, yep.
Do they have basements in?
I don't know the answer to that. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. We have a lot of things that are too clear to be moving forward with this hearing, but I'll ask who else wants to speak in favor of this. Anyone speaking in favor? If you're speaking in favor, come forward. Give your name and address, please.
Good evening. My name is Len Wosniewski. Together with my wife, Noreen, we reside at 596 Gulf Street, three houses down from George Ward's. We don't have a problem with George's proposition. Our only concern is that the access road that runs across our property should not be widened more than it is currently. We enjoy a nice, private area back there, and we want to keep it. But one lot that George wants to spin off, I don't think will make a big difference for us.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Come forward, please, if you're speaking in favor. Go ahead, sir.
I'm George Ward, owner of the property. I've maintained the property since 1954. I own the property since 1965. What I'm trying to do is reduce the problems with my property, so that there will be no problems in the future, when I am no longer here. Neighbors and owners will enjoy the same beauty and tranquility as now well into the future. A developer will not come in and destroy the property. I am trying to leave the property as the last owner Elsie Thompson would have liked. Neighbors know and appreciate what I am trying to accomplish, that it is why they are giving me such huge support. I inherited the land problems from when there was little or no zoning, and would like to solve them for the future of this property and the neighborhood. I did have a fourth house on the property that was destroyed by fire in 1987, known as 628 Gulf. At that time, I did not have the money to rebuild, and that's why I would like to rebuild now on that lot. My tenant in 624 would like a smaller home and would like to stay on the property. The house was burned because my mother was living with me at the time, and there was a ice cream truck, sky-blue ice cream truck, down at Gulf Beach. And it was doing kind of strange things. My mother got binoculars, took notes. After a week, she called the police. They came up, viewed what was going on for a day, went down and made arrests, and informed them that they had them because they were viewing the property from Ward's property and had notes. Well... Well, that Saturday night, the fire hydrant down at the end of the right-of-way on Oldfield Lane was knocked out. Sunday, my tenant called me, "My house is on fire." Apparently, the fire department didn't know that hydrant was knocked out, and they, by the time they tried to hook up to it, they couldn't. They went to Ranch Road, and at that time, my house is a total loss, so they just sprayed down the other house on Ranch Road to keep them from going. But it was drug dealers that burned down that house. And as for the right-of-way on Oldfield Lane, it's been used for over 100 years. I can vouch for it since 1954. There's been no accidents, no disagreements, no problems of any kind. Holiday traffic, party traffic, construction traffic, emergency vehicles, never a problem. The drive has worked well for over 100 years and still works well, and we all want it to stay as it is and would like the board to appreciate that and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Come forward, please.
I'm Tom Mealy from 612 Gulf Street. I share the longest border with George's property on the western side. We're in full, my wife and I are both in full, in favor of George's plan. We don't see that it disturbs us in any way whatsoever. One concern is that we maintain the right-of-way at the width that it currently is. It presents no problems whatsoever for us. There's three or four spots where you can pull over if there's an oncoming car, and we've had as many as 200 people at our house without it being an issue.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Joe Blickfeld. I live at 650 Gulf Street, which is the adjacent property to the east. It seems to me the overriding reason when someone requests a variance is they cannot create their own hardship. So, if we did grant this, it would seem that would eliminate the ability for him to come and claim he has an additional hardship. Therefore, by granting this, we've kind of solidified the future of that property, and it seems to me this is a reasonable future for that property as compared to what could possibly be requested. So, I see it as a situation where we can clear up the past and provide a direction of the future with some controls over it because all the hardships have been eliminated. So, I would be for it.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Are you speaking in favor? If you're speaking in favor, please come forward.
At Lenkey 35, Beatty Side Drive. We join the property next to George's, and my wife and I, Diane, are in favor.
Hi, my name is Jean Tupper. My husband Paul and I just recently purchased the property at 606 Gulf, and we also are in favor of the proposal, but again, are concerned about the right-of-way. We like it just the way it is, and we hope we'll be able to stay that way.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed?
I'm Rich Winters. My wife Debbie is with me at 65 Ranch Road. George came by, or Mr. Ward came by over the weekend, and he had a different plan that he was showing. He had shown five lots, and when he requested to sign that document or whatever, you know, and we were like concerned with their views, and said that we're not going to sign, you know, he got very upset and, you know, said that we're going to get condos if he doesn't get this. But really, there is no hardship here, so I hope you, you know, don't accept this proposal.
Thank you. Anyone here, anyone else speaking in opposition? Okay. Mr. Crusiden, do you have anything else to say?
No, I just had mentioned at the beginning of the memo, and I know the board likes to close the hearing and act that night. This is a lot of information. I don't know if you, you know, if you see fit to close the hearing tonight, but I mean, you may want to consider it over the next month. I mean, I'm not sure what your preference is, but we just ask you to take the time to consider all the information. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for saying that. Mr. Harris, I have a question for you again. With the addition, the proposed addition of more properties up there, would the access road have to be changed? We can't, we don't have a clarification on what the access road would, it's supposed to be 25 feet wide.
The regulations call for a private accessway of 25 feet. That would be per lot. Private means private, it doesn't mean shared.
Would the addition of three more units up there, does that change that it would
I can really only answer this from a zoning, I mean, that's a big, big question, and I don't want to go on about what, I can really only speak to what this board can do and can't do rather than sort of planning and zoning in global. The regulations do call for, you know, a rear lot has to have, has to be an acre in size, has to have a private means of access out to an accepted street. That's what 255 says.
Mr. Chairman, I can answer, I think, to some extent, the, if this board does not grant the requested variance for reduction of access from 25 feet to 10 feet, the planning and zoning board would not be able to approve our subdivision application. But if the board granted it, they wouldn't have the authority to require us to have a 25-foot access.
Okay. Board members, any other comments on this hearing? Go ahead, if you have something.
I guess one of the questions that I had, and it goes back to the lots, two instead of three. My question is economic gain. What is, you know, we can't grant a variance that's seeking an opportunity for economic gain or fortune. So, my question is, you know, taking that under consideration, how do you view, if you have three lots, that's more to sell, that's more to gain in the future? So, my question is, once again, if you reduce it to two lots, you decrease the number of variances that are needed, and there's a lot of other issues that are going on in this hearing, but I'm just still getting hung up with that. You have three parcels that in the future you can sell, or someone from your family may have an opportunity to sell, and we're not supposed to be in the business of granting variances that have economic gain attached to them. So, I'm curious to hear your thoughts towards that.
Mr. Vasino, I'm not really, I guess I don't, I'm not following on, you're not allowed to, we're supposed to be granting variances that have economic gain attached to it. I think that that's, you know, you might be talking about confiscation or illegal hardships, not a, money or economic gain is not a requirement or is, does not equal a legal hardship. The Verillo, a Verillo case which came out, I think, a couple of years ago now, kind of like decimated the ability to grant variances except in situations where you're reducing non-conformities, not, you know, once I say, I don't agree with that case, I think a lot of people in the state of Connecticut don't agree with that case, and I think it's going to be addressed by legislation at some point in time, maybe this, maybe this year. But the, what that case did leave was economic value of the lot. So, all along, you know, in growing up doing land use the past like 15 or 20 years, you're always told that, you know, you can't consider economic value with respect to variance or with a zoning approval. However, then this case comes along, and now it's the rule of Connecticut, and it basically only leaves economic value as the sole remaining thing. So, like you said, this application has a few things going on with it. I think we do have the old-fashioned, traditional legal hardships. The reason for that additional lot with its, kind of, has like a shoe at the bottom of it, the one on the, I guess, the Easterly side, but the hardship with respect to that is not an economic, is not a claimed economics hardship. We're not claiming economic hardship. Obviously, the property has economic value without the creation of that additional lot. What we're asking for is that because its only variance request is the 20-foot, 25-foot accessway, and the hardship is the development of the neighborhood over the years while the lot remained the same and has been in existence and not subdivided since the zoning regulations and subdivision regulations came into effect. So, now we have a significant parcel of property that would be a standalone lot on its own but for the fact that it's a rear lot and doesn't have the 25-foot access. If it had the 25-foot access, there would be no variances requested. So, I mean, that's what the request is about.
Mr. Soto, Mr. Soto has the...
Attorney Crusiden, here's the problem I have with this. Lot 1 is very small. You're looking at 20,000 square feet. Lot 3 is 1.24 acres. As Mr. Vasino said, if you eliminate Lot 1 and 2 and combine that into one, and you do two nice one-acre lots back here, the only variance you would need then would be the 10-foot right-of-way. Now, you could take and move the house onto each one of those lots, center, move one a little bit so you don't need a setback, take the other one and put it on Lot 3. Now, he'd have his three-lot subdivision. He could sell off one or two houses if he needed to, but we're not creating a bad precedent by doing an interior lot at 20,000 square feet. And then I don't think I'd have a problem with this.
Yeah, I think, Mr. Soto, a lot of times when these considerations are being made, I mean, you look at it a bunch of different ways, and then you have other people have eyes on it and make other comments. Some of it just comes down to the pure fact of money of moving the house or what it looks like, and I'm sure, I mean, we can have, well, I mean, it's the money, it's the money as far as the moving the house. It's the practical aspect of it. It's not the fact that it's economic gain, it's the fact that someone doesn't have the money to actually move the house. And those considerations, I mean, they're practical, realistic considerations that everyone, that everyone takes into consideration, whether it's a developer or the homeowner himself. I wasn't part of those earlier conversations. I'm not sure if, you know, what was discussed on that, but the, I think that when Mr. Duchesne and Mr. Ward looked at it, I know a variety of scenarios were looked at, and carving up the lots a bunch of different ways was probably examined.
Well, I just think we're setting a bad precedent by, you know, less than a half acre on that one lot when you need an acre, you know?
Well, I think that that's the nature of the lot, and that goes directly to the hardship. That's where the house is, that's where the other, and that's where the other house is. That's, I'm sure, I mean, Mr. Duchesne could probably speak to it, that's probably why the property lines were drawn that way, to go around the houses and to ask for as little variance as possible. I haven't had a conversation, we haven't thought about moving the houses. I know that...
Well, they do move them all the time down the beach, you know what I mean?
They elevate them, right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Did you have something?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to round out what everyone was saying because I think that it is misspeaking to say that the only variance requested on Lot 3 is the access width because the mere creation of Lot 3 creates variance requests for the other two proposed lots. So, to summarize what everyone here has been saying, fewer lots in, fewer proposed lots in that area would necessarily create fewer variance requests.
Okay. Thank you. So, we can decide, we could leave this hearing open, or I can close this hearing and you can make a motion. Have something in mind that...
You guys want to go?
What do you want to do? We leave it open, you can mull over this information a little bit more, but judging by a few of the things that have been said, I think, you could.
If you want to...
You could.
If you want to...
So, do you want me to close the hearing? Give it some thought for a minute, and we'll close the hearing and we'll make a motion or...
You guys want to do it?
Okay. Okay, this hearing is closed. Okay, so your thoughts are?
I would like to see three lots instead of four, and I would like to see them equal square, you know, at least one acre each because I think it's, you know, we're setting a bad precedent by going less than an acre. And a half acre, not even a half acre, it's 20,000 square feet, so it's .46 acres, so...
Yeah, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing from the neighbor seems to be the preservation of the community and kind of warding off greater development, a condo or whatever. If there are three proposed lots, you still are preserving the nature of the community, and I think that moving one of the houses to a third and final lot, the cost involved in that is not really something that we need to be discussing. The fact that the possibility to that, for that exists is what we discuss.
Do you want to follow up with a motion? Would you like to make a motion? No? I make a motion to deny without prejudice. We're motion to deny without prejudice. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Okay, we're going to take a couple of minute recess. Okay, we're going to be... Can, if you're going to be exiting, could you please exit? We want to resume this meeting.
Mr. Chairman, just as a matter of a reminder, we have these DPLU administrative summaries. There's two full copies floating around up there. There's one for every item on the agenda. They're short, you know, even the last one was short, one page, and it kind of just summarizes the proposal, what it's about, and what's important to know from a zoning point of view.
Are you going to be doing that from now on?
Yeah.
That's great. Thank you. Okay, we're going to resume this meeting. Okay? Word ready? Mr. Secretary?
Item number 2, 119 Herbert Street, MPB 118/910/2 in an RA zone. Gary Winaleski, engineer for Wilson Cordova, owner. Vary section 4.1.4, front yard projection to 20 where 46 permitted for deck and stairs. Rear yard projection to 7 feet where 46 permitted for a stairway.
119 Herbert Street. Who's here for 119 Herbert Street? Okay. We're going to move on to item number 3. We'll just hold this till the end of the meeting. Okay? I don't see them. 119 Herbert.
We can, we can postpone them until next month so that they don't shoot themselves in the flood.
Okay, so it's postponed or tabled?
Postponed.
Okay. Item number 2 is postponed.
Okay. Item number three, 20 Camden Street, MPB 24/397/5 in an R5 zone. Aresel DeJesus, agent for Moni Tith, owner. Vary section 3.1.4.1, north side yard setback to three feet where five required. Vary section 6.3.2, expansion of non-conforming structure to construct a two-story 10.5 by 24 addition.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Aresel, and I'm representing Moni. I don't think they were able to make it. Pretty much the hardship was that the owner bought the property in 2001, started building immediately after, between him and his family, they actually built the addition and whatnot, and he just didn't know the rules. He didn't know the permitting process, and this was done back in 2001. Took him about six months, I think, to complete the work that he did perform, and it was a complete neglect of not knowing what was needed in order to build on private property. He thought since he was in private property lines that he was able to proceed forward.
2001.
2001, when he bought it.
So how did this come about right now?
I believe Mr. Harris was just driving around and found it. I'm not too sure exactly how it was discovered. I just know that the letter of the violation was sent not too long ago.
By way of background, an anonymous complaint came in about work without permits. I investigated, it found that there was indeed work without permits, issued the order, and that's why the applicant's here.
Okay. Did a contractor build this, or the person who owns the house, or...
Yes, the person that owns the house.
Okay. Mr. Sota?
Well, do you have any elevations on what was done? All I have is, it just says two-story residence.
Yeah, no...
Doesn't show what was added, what wasn't.
We, they just did a survey for, just for this, right now.
We need better plans than this to make any kind of decision on this.
No, absolutely, we can provide it. It would probably take a land surveyor to go in there and actually do a little bit more detailed plans. They just did that for right now to have some type of drawing for Mr. Harris.
That's the same thing I have. It's not good enough. I say we table this hearing until we get better plans to decide. Okay. I need elevation drawings of what was put on, what size it was. This is just showing an existing house.
Absolutely. No problem.
You're just looking to justify the record so we can move on with this, but we're going to have to look into this a little bit more, so...
That's not a problem.
Want to make a motion?
So, Mr. Chairman, you're going to keep this hearing open for more information?
Okay. Okay, we're just keeping, this hearing is open.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Item number four, 31 Eighth Avenue, MPB 9/102/11A in an R12.5 zone. Theo Borgenmeister, agent for Martha Burwell Gaynor, owner. Vary section 4.1.1.1, setback of 12 feet in front yard to allow an accessory structure in the front yard.
Good evening. I'm Theo Borgenmeister. I'm agent for Martha Gaynor, the owner of the property on Eighth Avenue, 31 Eighth Avenue. The intention is to add a garage to an existing driveway, which is there since 1990, which is now used for parking the cars, and we want to extend this to a garage to be built next to the house. We projected it in such a way that we remain at a four-foot distance from the borderline with our neighbor on 29th Eighth Avenue. But that has a result of being close to a road which is on the other side of the house. So we are actually having a little hardship here that we have on both sides of the house a road. On the backside of the house, there is a, that's Milford Point Road, which we don't use as an exit or anything, but it is then therefore seen as a front, not other front of the house. So we have a deviation there from, to keep about 12 feet away from Milford Point Road, which is in our backyard. The other hardship we have there, not only that we have the two roads, but we also have a kind of a V-shaped property, which results in having hardly any other possibility of just building the garage on the end of the driveway. We have that in a drawing, and I assume you have the drawing in front of you? So the only deviation or variance we're asking for is seeing this as a back road, which we don't use. The garage will be connected to the driveway and not to the other road, to the Milford Point Road. But we still have a deviation there for staying away 25, or I think it's 30 feet, which is impossible.
Okay, you're all set, sir? Okay.
Yes.
Have you thought of any other kind of plans on how you can position this garage? Because you could probably do it without a variance.
I didn't understand that, sorry.
Have you thought of any other way that you could reposition this garage so that you wouldn't need this variance?
Yeah, if we go more forward with the garage, we have a deviation from the setback to the, to the borderline with our neighbor on 29th Eighth Avenue. I kept there more or less, as you can see, four feet, but if we put it forward, we have another deviation there.
Okay, Mr. Sota, go ahead.
Okay, did you think about attaching the garage to the house to save that almost six feet you have there?
Yeah, we are still considering that, to eventually do that. The only thing is then...
If you attached it to the house and brought it forward and put a door where that window is, I don't think you need a variance.
We thought about that, but then we need a somewhat wider garage to make a proper entrance from the house into the garage. You know, if you make attachments, you do that to...
Well, you got a 24-foot garage.
Yes.
That's pretty good size.
It's an oversized garage.
That's an oversized garage.
I think. I think it's 24, isn't it?
24, yeah.
Yeah.
You'd have room for a landing and steps down toward inside?
Yeah, but then we want to create more...
Put a 17- or an 8-foot single door on the garage, and then you'd have room...
Yeah, you can do a single-door garage, yes. But we want to consider a double-door garage for two cars.
Okay, any other questions? Anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any questions for this?
Yeah, we informed neighborhood already before we were planning this.
Okay.
We have not received any opposition.
Well, there's nobody came opposing.
Particularly not the direct neighbor, you know, because it's, that is the closest to the garage.
All right, any other question, more questions for this gentleman? No? Okay, this hearing is closed. Think there's room for improvement here?
Mr. Chairman, just to, technical matter, just to beat a dead horse, there is a summary. All of these, all of these applications have summaries.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Do I have a question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Harris, if he attached that garage to the house, what would the side lot setback be once it's attached to the house? For that, for that zone?
If it's an attached garage, then it has the normal zone setback. So for this zone, it would, what is it, 12.5? It would be 10 feet.
So with the 5.9, the four feet, you'd pretty much have it. Be close.
Well, I can tell you that if he attaches the garage to a house, the setback is the, it's as if it was part of the house, so it would be 10 feet.
Yeah, so he would have it. Might have to take an inch or two off the garage.
We need a motion.
I make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Second.
We're motion to deny without prejudice, and we have a second on the motion. Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
I'm with the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, denied without prejudice. Do you understand, sir, on the decision on this? It's denied without prejudice. You don't have to reapply, but you can change your plans and resubmit them for another hearing.
Mr. Chairman, a correction there. Denied without prejudice means he can reapply without the six, the usual six-month waiver.
Right, sir? You have that? Okay, Mr. Vassino?
Yep. Okay, item number six, 19 Walker Street, MPB 45/515/5 in an R5 zone. Elaine Melillo, owner. Vary section 3.1.4.1, setback to 8.25 where 10 is required to construct an 11.67 by 10.75 second-story addition.
Yes, hello, good evening. My name is Elaine. I'm on 19 Walker Street. And my, I moved into the house three weeks ago, very excited to be in that nice neighborhood. What I'm requesting tonight is to build an expansion of a second-floor bedroom on a non-conforming structure. So the first floor, which I'm building a porch deck, needs to be put in so then I could build a second-floor bedroom addition. The porch is about 10 by 11 in structure, and it exceeds by 1.75 as non-conforming.
What is there right now?
Right now, there isn't anything. So there's, you mean on the second floor or the first floor?
Well, even on the first, what you're looking to do is square off the end, edge of the house.
Exactly. There's nothing, there's nothing there. So it's kind of like a tuck-in where I need to build off, square off the house so then I could build the additional bedroom upstairs.
Pam, can you please state your hardship, your hardship for the land itself?
Land itself, so...
Variances are granted for hardships based on the land, not on the circumstances of the family.
So that, what does that imply? So I'm building, so not, when you say hardship, not to the family, it is really for building another room for my child.
That's a, I'll give you time to consider that.
So, we're not exceeding what's already existing there, so it's, by the picture, I don't know if you could tell, it's a, it's a tuck-in space where I, if I did build a porch, it will align with what's existing there, so it totally becomes a total square of the house footprint.
It looks like that if you were in another 1.75 feet, you would, you would need the variance. It would, the addition would be a little smaller, but you would need the variance.
Right. Yes, we did consider that, but the bedroom would become very, very small, to a point where it becomes less than about nine feet by 10 and a half. So it becomes a bedroom that's too small for someone to be living in.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
So, your lot's like the only non-conforming one on the street?
I'm not, I'm not certain of that. I just moved in three weeks ago, so I believe the other neighbors, the ones that I've met have done...
Their house falls, their house falls within the setback lines, and yours doesn't on either side? Or just on the one, just on the one side?
I think on both sides, on both sides. So one, I believe the setback from where I'm adding the porch is 10, it requires 10 feet, it requires eight, 10 feet, but I'm going to eight. The other side, I believe, is only six feet from my neighbor, from the garage.
Mr. Chairman, I've got the, the surveys right up here. The lot conforms to zoning. The house is conforming with respect to the side yard setback on the left side as you're looking at it from the street, and is non-conforming with regards to the setback as you're looking at it from the right side. So it's conform, the house is conforming on the south side, not conforming on the north side. But the lot, the lot conforms to zoning.
Okay, any other questions for this lady? Anyone here, anyone else speaking in favor of this application? Anyone here opposed to this application? Any more questions? More questions? Okay, this hearing is closed. We'll have a decision for you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Sota.
Well, when you look at this, the, the front right corner is only 3.69 feet off the property line, and that back corner's 8.25, so she's really only asking for 1.75 feet. And we're squaring off the existing house, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with this.
But, but she doesn't have a legal hardship? I mean, she can shave off 1.75 feet.
I understand that, but the house is kind of chopped up when you look at the way it is. It's not a square house. It's, it's kind of like a Z.
Any other comments?
I agree with Mr. Sota. She's not asking to, well, I mean, take this how you will, kind of newly build in the setback. The house already exists in the setback, and she's evening it off, so I have much less of a problem with this than some other proposals.
My concern is that when we questioned her about reducing the room, she said that the room would be a smaller bedroom, as opposed to being willing to compromise and meet the variance request that we are making to reduce the non-conformity or eliminate it. So I'm quite honestly having a problem with that.
Yeah, but John, the front's only 3.69 off the property line, and you got eight, eight and a quarter feet there. I mean, it's not like, you know, she's not asking for a lot. She's not asking to come closer. She's just asking to square off what's there, so I don't have a problem with this. I mean, you know, the front corner's not even four feet off the property line. The way this house was designed and built, I mean, that's not her fault.
Okay, so the front corner is not even four feet. So then why is the variance request 8.25 and not four feet? Can you help me with that? Mr. Harris?
They're not touching the four feet. That's existing. It's existing.
Okay. So make a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The approval's based on the, the configuration of the house on the lot.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Dubois?
I'm with the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
I'm against the motion.
Mr. Sota?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Passes.
Item number seven, West Orland Street, oh, sorry, my apologies, 333 West Orland Street, MPB 38/561/28 in an R5 zone. thirty-eight slash five sixty-one slash twenty-eight in an R5 zone. John Cochran, Esquire for David Colhane, owner. Vary section three dot one dot four, rear yard setback to zero point four where five required and side yard setback to one point eight where four required to construct second story loft addition. Vary section four dot one dot five to one point eight feet to where zero point four, to zero point four where four permitted for patio.
Good evening. I'm applying for the variance-
Would you just pick up that microphone? Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm applying to the variance due to the narrow shape of the lot and the topography of the land and I'm asking to extend the garage to the left where there's a little spare property next to it so I can make a more usable space of that garage. I do have a couple of notes from the neighbors. May I present these?
Okay, sure. Okay, um, what do you plan on doing? You planning adding onto the top of this garage?
I would like to utilize the space over the garage, yes, and only raise the roof line to what's permitted, I believe, fifteen feet from grade.
This back, this back section on your property is pretty used up already. I mean, you, you, you're right to the border on everything. Um, I'm, I'm wondering, do you plan on reconstructing the garage? Was that one of your plans?
Well, the garage is an original structure that's been there maybe seventy years. It's a galvanized steel building that was put together with almost four by eight waffle sheets and that galvanized steel has started to pit and leak and, to be honest with you, it's just about falling down.
Okay, so you can't possibly build on top of that? You have to rebuild the garage?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, and I'm, what I would want to do is keep the property lines that are existing due to the narrow property that exists down at the beach. That was my intention.
But then you also want to go to, uh, if you're looking at, you're in the front of the garage, you want to go to the left of the garage and still add more? Because you have a, you, you have a, a non-conforming lot-
Correct.
And you've already used up almost the whole lot and this is adding more to the additional non-conformity to that property.
Yeah, I was hoping just to extend the garage's footprint to the left.
But you're, you're proposing a second story above the garage.
I don't know if it would be considered a full second story other than just gaining some space.
It's still a larger structure that's already there.
Right.
So you're still, like I had said, it's a non-conforming lot and you're adding even more to it.
Right.
Your hardship is?
Just the narrow shape of the land.
Most of the, the lots over that way are all about the same size, so we have to know what's unique about that property to make your hardship, uh, a little bit more valid. Any other questions for this gentleman? Go ahead, Mr. Soder.
Well, I have the same feelings. I think you're asking for a lot here. I think the lot's very tight as it is and, I mean, you're right on the property line. I mean, what's your back setback on that?
The s-
Less than a foot?
Excuse me?
How, the back of the garage to the neighbor's property line, how many, how many feet's that? Not even a foot?
It's, it's right there. Probably a foot, yeah.
Not even, not even six inches?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, you're-
Other questions? No? Okay, this hearing's closed. Discussion? Motion? Discussion?
No, I, I think, um, I think the lot's too congested as it is and, uh, you know.
But I'm only asking to contin-
The hearing's closed, sir, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
I mean, he's asking to expand an existing garage, you know, and you're expanding it bigger. I just can't go with this.
Okay, we need a motion.
I make a motion to deny.
Second.
Is it denied without prejudice, may I ask?
Please, please state your, your reason why and are you denying it or are you denying without prejudice?
No, this is an outright denial. I, I just don't think the property's big enough to, uh, to support a garage that size.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, um, the reasons have to reflect, uh, if there's a hardship, if, if there is a hardship, you explain it, if there's not a hardship, you have to say there's no hardship.
It's an exist, it's a thirty-foot lot, but they're all thirty-foot lots on that street and, uh, there's no hardship with the land.
We have a motion to deny, we have a second on the motion. Mr. Dubois.
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti.
With the motion.
Mr. Vasino.
With the motion.
Mr. Soder.
With the motion.
I'm with the motion, denied.
Thank you.
Item number eight. Four eighty-five Anderson Avenue, MPB eighty-one slash seven oh six slash three in an R12.5 zone. Thomas Lynch, Esquire Attorney for Gold Investments, owner. Vary section three dot one dot four dot one. Front yard setback to twenty-four point seven where thirty required to construct a single family residence.
That's a little cockeyed, but it'll, it'll suffice. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Just for the record, my name is Thomas Lynch. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Lynch, Trembickie and Boynton and my office is located here at sixty-three Cherry Street. And I'm presenting to you tonight an application for a variance to allow the construction of a single-family residence on the property located at four eighty-five Anderson Avenue. My client, Gold Investments, uh, purchased this property back in two thousand and two. The subject property is actually the last lot in the Hunter's Run subdivision that was approved by the Planning and Zoning Board back in nineteen, uh, I mean, two thousand and two, sorry. Uh, that subdivision was approved, it was five lots. Uh, four of the houses, uh, were built over the last seven or eight years by Tom Calucci. Uh, I've given you a handout that is showing you the other houses on Hunter's Run and this is the last, uh, lot on, uh, that subdivision map that my client now wishes to, uh, to build. The property is located on the corner of Anderson Avenue and Hunter's Run, so the hardship that we're claiming to you tonight is that it's a corner lot. Under our regulations, we're required to hold a front yard setback off of both Hunter's Run and Anderson Avenue. But the way that the house is configured, uh, we're, uh, presenting this to you, uh, to allow the construction of a reasonably sized twenty-seven, twenty-eight, hundred-square-foot four-bedroom colonial that'll match the other houses that, uh, have previously been constructed on Hunter's Run. On Anderson Avenue, uh, the houses along that stretch are much smaller, they are approximately twelve hundred to fourteen hundred square-foot, uh, ranches. Uh, so the request here is to have this house be built on this lot in conformity with the other four houses that were, uh, built on Hunter's Run. So the handout that I gave to you very briefly shows, uh, pictures from Vision Appraisal, the property at eleven Hunter's Run consisting of some twenty-four hundred and eight square feet, the property at twenty-one Hunter's Run which consists of, uh, some twenty-nine hundred and fifty-one gross area, uh, square feet, the property at twenty-five Hunter's Run which consists of twenty-eight hundred and seventeen square feet, and the property at twenty-nine Hunter's Run which consists of two thousand seven hundred and eighty-six square feet. So the way that this house is configured is to eliminate the safety hazard of having a driveway go out onto Anderson Avenue and to have the house face Hunter's Run along with the other houses in the subdivision and as a result of that, uh, it does necessitate our request to you for a front yard variance off of Anderson Avenue. But I will submit to you that in that zone, the thirty-foot front yards, uh, setback that's required, as we're showing on the house that's laid out on our plans here, uh, it does have a twenty-four point seven, what we will consider to be, and I'm proposing to you, to be considered as a side yard, which is more than double the side yard requirement in the, uh, R12.5 zone. And in that zone, the side yard requirement is ten feet so that the distance between the house and Anderson Avenue would be twenty-four point seven feet and I feel, and submit to you, that that six-foot difference really is de minimis in respect to the totality of the, uh, the requirement of the regulation. It's a residence that's going to be, uh, th- thirty-two by fifty feet in size, it matches as a colonial the other houses that are on the street and, as I said, the driveway will come from the residence, uh, and, uh, come onto Hunter's Run eliminating the safety factor of having an additional driveway on Anderson Avenue. If you're familiar with that stretch of Anderson Avenue, of course, you know that the traffic does travel very fast along that straightaway that runs from, uh, basically Cork Road down to the Five Corners and, uh, again, we feel that, uh, this is a reasonable request and with the fact that this is a corner lot, we feel that a legal hardship does exist here. Robert Benedetto, who's the manager of Gold Investments, uh, the project manager is with me tonight, if there's any other further questions specifically about the house, but that, uh, in some, in substance is, uh, the basis for our argument and request for the variance.
The front of the house is going to be on the side street there, right? What's the name of that side street?
Correct. Uh, Hunter's Run.
That's Hunter Run?
Yeah. So this house, Joe, will match, and that's why I gave you the handout, it's going to match the other colonials that were built on, on Hunter's Run.
The hardship is the driveway?
The hardship is the fa-
Pretty much.
My claim of the, of a hardship is that the fact that this is a corner lot and that there's a very de minimis, uh, reduction in the side yard, uh, uh, the front yard request from thirty feet to twenty-four and coupled with that, if you consider now that the distance between the house and the Anderson Avenue be considered a side yard, in that zone, a side yard requirement is ten feet, we're providing twenty-four point seven feet.
Do you know if there's any sidewalks along Anderson Avenue on that side?
I don't think there are. There is a Vision Appraisal picture of the house that was built back in the twenties that was on this lot and I think it's shown on your map. Uh, there's some concrete steps that walk up, uh, that was, those were the steps going up to the original house. Do you know, is there a sidewalk? Yeah, but is there a sidewalk in Anderson? There is on Hunter's Run, but I don't, I didn't think that there was a sidewalk. Yeah?
You see where that says?
I see that going, I see it going to the, to-
And the stairs-
Towards Five Corners, but I don't see it on the other side.
No, but it, but that line's followed through to where the steps come down.
Okay.
So, there might be a-
Mr. Chairman?
But those stairs were, were actually going up to the old house that was demolished.
Mr. Chairman, if you look on the survey, there's an existing walk along both Anderson and Hunter's Run.
Okay. I stand corrected, I didn't think there was. Hmm? No. I see what, what, uh, Billy was, uh, showing on the, uh, the other side of Hunter's Run.
Can you tell us again the square footage of this house? It's a-
It's going to be approximately twenty-eight hundred square feet, a four-bedroom colonial.
And did you say that the average square footage of the houses in that area on Anderson were twelve and thirteen?
Twelve to fourteen, yeah, they're all raised ranches, Sarah. Basically, your three-bedroom raised ranch that was built in the fifties with one and a half bath. Yep.
Any other questions for Mr. Lynch?
Mr. Lynch?
Yes.
If you reduced the lane for the house by six feet, you'd make the setback.
That's correct, but then it would be a very small house, it would only be forty-six feet, it wouldn't comply with the other houses on the street and part of what nine-two of our regulations call for, for this board to grant variances is to consider the, uh, area, the, uh, the neighborhood and whether or not this request would, uh, be in conformity with the neighborhood.
Right, Mr. Soder.
I mean, I can see keeping it the size you want, but you do have six inches, you got ten point six on the, uh, side there, you have, uh, you could put that right at ten feet and get almost twenty-five feet on the side. Would your client be willing-
And if you, and if you think that that six inches is important and you want us to modify the plan, I'm sure my client would be glad to do it. Yeah.
But not the six feet?
John, when you do cut a colonial down to-
I was going to say-
John, when you cut six feet off a colonial-
Six feet off of a, of a colonial is-
It makes it very hard to make, get the bedrooms the right size and everything.
Right.
I, I, I agree with that.
Well-
What's the, what's the unique-
That's not like taking eighteen inches, well, six feet's a lot.
I'm throwing it back to Stephen, inter, would the plans have to be modified or could this application be granted to allow for a twenty-five foot front yard setback?
We could do that with a condition.
Yeah.
Turn your microphone on. Mr. Harris, can you turn your microphone on?
Okay, we have it. R12.5 zone, so what's the question to me? The minimum front yard is thirty feet.
So if we had a westerly side yard of ten feet, that would create a front yard variance request of twenty-five point one where thirty feet is required.
So you want to change the nature of your application on the fly? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? That sounds like, that, that-
Mr. Harris, can we just put that in a condition?
You're asking for one thing and now you're asking for something else.
Right.
Couldn't we just make that a condition?
You know, I'm-
But it, but it's a less-
We can talk about, in theory, you know, in theory, you can just flip the house and make it fit inside the building box.
No, I think the question is, do we pass this and come back in February with changed map or is the request modified to allow for a twenty-five foot, one-inch setback off of Anderson Avenue?
Uh, the, being conservative, I don't think it's a good idea to change the nature of an application on the fly because the public doesn't get the benefit of that.
Okay. So if it's the board's wish, we can table this and come back with a modified map in February?
Yeah, yeah.
Or you could leave the application the way it is.
Or we, or we could.
Yep.
All right, anyone else here speaking in favor of this application? Is there anyone here opposed? Anyone here opposed? Okay. Okay, let's give us some thought here for a minute. What do you think? Right, Mr. Soder.
All right, well, here's my, here's my feeling on a corner lot. I think a corner lot is a, is always a hardship because you have two front yard setbacks and they're building, they're asking to build the same size houses that, that's on the street and you want it, you want everything to conform, you know what I mean? So I don't have a problem with the twenty-four point- So, I don't have a problem with the 24.7 because it, it is double what the other side yards are in the neighborhood, but because this is a corner lot, you know, I do think that's a hardship, and I don't have a problem with the 24.7 feet, so I'm in favor of this application the way it is, I don't know how you guys feel.
All right, well, the driveway being on, on the side street is, uh-
Well, that's a big safe, that's a big safety issue.
That does contribute to the hardship of the property.
Well, I, I wouldn't want my, I wouldn't want my driveway on the side street, I wouldn't wanna be pulling out into Anderson Avenue.
Well, there's still, if you go up Anderson Avenue, there's a lot of people that-
I understand that.
Are exiting there already.
You're actually on a corner, you know, I mean, it's-
And can I add, also, you're in close proximity to the intersection with Blue Jay Drive across the street, so you have traffic coming out of there, basically across the street from this lot.
What did the original subdivision show, the driveway on Hunter's Run?
This, this is the original subdivision.
So, it's-
So, this lot is the last lot-
So, this driveway was supposed to be on Hunter's Run all the time, all along?
No, the old house, the old house had it-
Off onto Anderson?
Off of Anderson, right.
Any other questions? Ms. Ferranti, you have a question?
Well, we're talking about this proposed building conforming with Hunter's Run, but it's an Anderson Avenue address, it was originally situated towards Anderson Avenue, the Anderson Avenue houses are half the size, it could easily fit in without a variance if it were conforming with Anderson Avenue instead of Hunter's Run, so I'm not sure why we're not talking about that.
I, I agree wholeheartedly, um, I don't mean to rain on anyone's parade, but there's not a God-given rule that it has to be a colonial because it's trying to conform with the other four houses, it could just as easily be a ranch or another house that would fit and meet the setbacks.
Any comments, Mr. Lynch?
Well, to respond to Mr. Vassino, the house could be flipped and face Anderson, so one way or the other, that same house could be built, I'm just saying it makes more sense to have it onto Hunter's Run and have it conform with that neighborhood, it's actually part of that neighborhood.
But if you flipped it-
So, I mean, that house, that ha, that sized house, that 32-by-50-foot house could be built with it facing Anderson Avenue.
And you wouldn't need a variance.
And you wouldn't need a variance, right?
And you wouldn't need a variance, but my, my point being is, again, and this board has done this many, many times, taking into consideration what's good for the, for a neighborhood, this is part of the Hunter's Run subdivision, this is the last lot of that subdivision, it just wasn't built on yet, they land banked it, they kept it, uh, for the, you know, last 10, 15 years wanting to build the last house. So, to build the last house that conforms with all those other houses that I gave you the picture of, it necessitates a variance request because of the fact that it is located on the corner.
Um, another thing now, that, if the house was, if the frontage was on Anderson Avenue, this would be a different plan, you could still have a driveway on, on the other side street with the garage on the other end of the house.
I discussed that with Robert, he said the floor plan that they have, it, it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Okay.
You'd have to have a garage under, and it just-
Any other questions? None? Okay, this hearing's closed. Okay. We have some different thoughts here on how we can do these things differently.
I mean, yeah, you can turn the house, but the house has a deck on it, and that, it's still gonna need a variance for the deck because it's not gonna fit in the, uh, in the setback there, so, um, you know, you, you put the side, you build the house the other way, and then you need a variance for the deck, I mean, I think the cleanest way to do it is do it the way they have it proposed, because now, 25 feet to the street, it, I think is a fair amount, it's kinda like the ones up on, um, we changed the setback, what was that subdivision up off Wheeler's Farms Road?
Tanglewood, sorry.
Tanglewood, we changed the front yard setbacks on those to 20, 20, 30 feet-
30 feet.
Then another one came back, we reduced it to 20, here you have 25 feet, I don't-
We reduced it to 20, but it was 30, so I mean-
Right, I don't see a problem with this, I mean.
And that was in R-18 Zone, too.
Okay. Okay, we need a motion.
Well, I hope you all agree with me, but I make a motion to approve.
I do have a question, uh, for you, Bill, so if we'd flip the house towards Anderson and it fits in the, and it fits on the lot without a variance, that you're saying we re, there would be a variance request for that porch?
For the deck.
My feeling on that, the, the corner lot is, you know, I've always felt is a hardship, and I've always told people when they're buying houses to avoid a corner lot wherever you can get around to it.
Mr. Chairman, there, there is, there is a pending motion, if Mr. Soto wants to withdraw his motion for more discussion, he can do that.
I was just about, I was just about to say, we have a motion, but we also have some discussion, so, um-
Discussing the motion.
Yes, discussing the motion. Need a second? We don't have a second, we need another motion. You wanna try it with, uh-
I'll, I'm gonna second the motion. I'm gonna second the motion.
We have a motion, and we have a second on the motion.
Uh, point of clarification, there was a motion, and then there was a ruling that there was no second, and then there was a second, so we need a motion before we have a second.
Okay.
Okay, I'll rema-
Restate your motion.
Restate my motion, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
The approval is based on the hardship of the corner lot.
Motion to approve and a second on the motion, Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
Against the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. Pass, Mr. Dubois. With the motion. It passes.
All right, thank you.
All right, item number nine, 264 High Street, MPB 65 slash 323 slash 16, RMF dash one, Christopher Cody, Esquire Attorney for Milford Redevelopment and Housing Partnership Owner, vary section 5 dot 3 dot 4 dot 1 to install a 24-square-foot sign, thank you, where nine square foot permitted.
Good evening, Board members, Christopher Cody with the Firm of Cody in Gennello, 185 Broad Street in Milford, uh, I was before you previously on a similar application in the September, I believe it was the September 13th meeting, at which the board denied without prejudice, so I'm before you again, uh, being the last on the agenda tonight, I will be as short as I can, because what I'm gonna request that you do is that you incorporate by reference all the comments and the record from the previous September meeting, uh, so that would've included my exhibits, it would've included the argument, and it would've included the, the comments, uh, in favor from Charles Montalbano, Alderman Brian Anderson, and, uh, the executive director from the Housing Authority, Anthony Vassilio, uh, so as I noted, you denied without prejudice, you invited the Housing Authority to return with a lesser request, which you had before you, uh, what I was, I see the, the board flipping to those exhibits, the first is a, is a visual rendering, uh, the first attachment to that is, as I understand how the sign regulation requires calculation, which is you draw a box around the whole sign and measure the square box, uh, the second exhibit, uh, basically shows if we conform the box to the area of the sign, and the third exhibit simply shows that the highlighted crosshatch areas are sort of dead space in the sign, which are included in the calculation of the square area of the sign. So, the point is, is that the previous request was 44 square feet, I believe, this request has, uh, deleted any signage on the rear pillar of the building, confined it to the front, taken off, uh, reference to High Street, so now it just says Foreign Towers 264, uh, and, uh, that, by calculation of the zoning officer, I believe, comes to 20, well, the 24 square feet, which was calculated by the architect, and I believe confirmed, Steve would've looked at that, but, uh, the point of the exhibits is that the actual square area of the sign is somewhat less than that, if you calculate just the square area of the lettering, it's 14 square feet, uh, so this, the sign is somewhere between, let's say 18 and 20 square feet, and I'm not taking any issue with the way the, the calculation is done, I'm just pointing out that the, the density of the, of the sign is somewhat less than the actual request, uh, based upon the way the regulations call for the calculation. So, if the board has questions, I, I assume that you'd like me to at least state for tonight's hearing, uh, the, the hardship, uh, which would be that only nine square foot is, uh, permitted for signage in a residential district, uh, and that's for all residences, so the request is based not on economic or financial hardship, uh, or even the least cost option, uh, the regulations don't take into consideration a building of this scale, and, uh, therefore, uh, that creates a hardship by the regulation, again, not taking into contemplation adequate signage for a building or use of this scale, it won't alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and it's a substantial reduction from the previous proposal, which the board rejected, so I'll answer any questions.
Is this the only sign that's gonna be on the building, though?
The, the buil, yes, the building has frontage, or the property has frontage, both on West Main Street and on High Street, and no signage is, is contemplated for the West Main Street side.
And, of course, this is lit, so, I mean, the, the issue we had before, the sign was a lot larger and it was a lot brighter, um, it's still on the larger side, but it, it looks pretty good, actually, so.
Yes, it's, it's indirectly lit, uh-
Okay, so it's, okay.
Right, it's only from behind, it's, it would be using the LED strip lighting, so, while the, while the rendering, you know, shows the lighting, I think it would actually be much softer in practice, so instead of using some sort of a wall washer, which would be more intrusive, the, the, the letters would be standoff the building with the LED strip lighting in the back.
So, it's lit from behind and it's just pushing the-
Correct, it's indirect, correct.
It's kinda pushing the letter some.
It basically lights the wall behind the sign, which makes the, the sign standoff the wall.
Okay, is there anyone else here speaking in favor? Is there anyone here opposed to this application? If you're opposed, come forward.
Good evening, um, my name is Ellen Velasquez, I live at 265 High Street, directly across the street from the Ford Apartments, um, I was here once before, um, I see that the sign is gonna be 24 square feet, now I heard before on that 8th Avenue project, that one of you, I think it was Mr. Soto, he said, I heard him say, 24 square feet, it's quite big, so-
Uh, we were, we were, that was in reference to a garage, and the gentleman was building a garage that was 24 by 22.
Oh, I see.
It wasn't a sign, it was, it was a structure.
Okay, all right, but this is gonna be lit again, this one is gonna be lit, from behind, he said, the man said, and I still don't understand why they have to have a lit sign, the pa, the, the building has been painted a periwinkle blue and beige, and I don't understand why they just can't have a wooden sign right in front on the grass part in cursive letters, 264 High Street, everyone knows it's Ford Apartments, I think it still looks to me like a hotel. I, I-
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Soto, you have a question for this lady?
Well, I just wanna point out that when I drove by, the existing sign is kinda like a real estate sign, and if I remember right, didn't it have two floodlights on it?
It did, but they never, they never, I mean, they repaired the lights, the light bulbs, they would, they would go out, they never fixed them, so we-
Well, I think this, this sign will be a lot softer than two floodlight bulbs that was closer to the road, so I think this is ki, kind of an impro, I mean, this is, I feel this is a big improvement from what they brought months ago, it kinda looked like a-
Can you come back to the microphone, if you have something to say, please?
The original proposal, I thought, looked like a hotel that belonged in, in Las Vegas or something.
I didn't see any, I didn't see Miss Mann's, um, photos, I didn't see them, I'm just, I'm just hearing them, yeah.
To scale, to scale to the side of the building, uh, it's a huge, huge improvement.
I think it'd be much happier than that with them floodlights, or what they were proposing the last time.
I just don't like the lights at all.
Well, it might be a softer lighting, it's also, it, it, well, it can, well, I, I don't think it'd be, I don't think this would be overbearing, I think this would be-
No, I, I-
Actually contributing to the, a little bit of light on the sidewalks and stuff like that.
But you think it goes with, with our neighborhood? My house is 18-
The building doesn't go with the neighborhood entirely, so, I mean, they've, they've done a lot-
But it was falling down, you gotta take the brick off it.
Someone told me that that's not-
Mr. Chairman?
Yep.
It's just, this sort of, um, friendly back and forth is, is hard to transcribe.
True, true.
Um, so, no, it's, it's okay, but just that if you can, if you can, if you can be there, then you can carry on a conversa, a back and forth, that, that can be-
I know, we start to talk and then it starts to get-
That can be legibly transcribed.
It starts to get out of control.
I'm not used to this, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not used to this.
Say what else is on your-
I, I just think it looks like a hotel.
Okay.
Okay, and I don't understand why in the grass part where Mr. Soto was saying about where the other side was, they could make a beautiful sign like that with, with lights on the left and lights on the right like the one that's there now, but what would happen is, they, uh, never would replace the bulbs once they went out, I just don't like anything like this on the building itself, I think it looks like a hotel.
Thank you. Anyone else speaking in opposition? Anyone else in opposition? Mr. Cody?
Yes, uh-
You can read both.
Thank you, I, I understand, Ms. Velasquez, is, lives directly across the street, and I would note that the sign, the existing thing that looks like a real estate sign, is on the street, so this sign is 45 feet from the property line, so if we were to do what she's suggesting and light it, the sign would be almost 50 feet closer to her house, so I, I actually think this is actually beneficial to her, whether or not, obviously, I don't mean to speak for you, uh, if they were to relight that sign and, and recreate something in its existing location, I think it, it would be more intrusive to her because it was so much closer.
Okay, thank you.
May I ask a question, Attorney Cody? The position of the sign on the wall, do you, is that approximation where it's actually gonna go, do they have schematics for the exact height?
Right, that, that is, you, uh, in the, in the file, you had a scale drawing.
Okay.
That's just the rendering, the scale drawing shows, uh, to believe, at the 3A scale, to be 25 feet up the wall.
Okay.
So, it's a five-story building, and the sign would be 25 feet high, fif, uh, well, the, the property line starts at 44 feet and runs to 47 feet from the street.
Okay.
I have a question.
Thank you.
Right, Mr. Soto.
Attorney Cody, what is the actual height of the letters, are they, what are they, about 15, 16 inches?
No, 12 inches.
12 inches, so really, it, it, together, it's four feet, but, okay, so there-
Right, and that's-
You got three feet of lettering.
Yeah, that's why the, the architect was indicating, if you measure the le, the spare, the square area of the letters alone, it's 14 square feet.
And let me ask you, if you get this up and it's too bright, would you consider putting a dimmer on it to please your neighbor?
Well, certainly, but, but what I would, uh, ask is, is that the architect used strip lighting, only that which is necessary, again, if you're lighting the wall, it creates a contrast, so the sign's not really lit, the sign just stands off the wall by lighting the space behind it.
Right. Any other questions? We all set?
All set.
Okay, this hearing's closed.
Thank you.
Um, I think it's a great improvement, and it's scaled to the side of the building, um, I don't, I don't have a problem with it, actually, the light might- I don't have a problem with it. Actually, the light might contribute along the walkways on the side of the building, so... I know it's a residential area, but this building is also theirs.
Well, by backlighting it, it's not going to, it's not going to be blaring, so I don't... And I think it's a big improvement from what, and they did everything we asked, so I don't have a problem with this.
We have a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve.
Second, please.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second on the motion. Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved.
Mr. Chairman, the, I believe that gentleman there is for one nineteen, Herbert?
Oh, okay. Okay, we have one more.
We need to, we need to take a quick break, I think.
Okay, we, just hold on for a minute. We have, we were just going to recess for a couple of minutes. Get reorganized. Okay, we're ready to resume. Let's see. Item number two was postponed, but the gentleman has showed up, so... Would you read item number two?
Was going to be, we were going to postpone it.
We were going to postpone.
But now we can proceed. We can proceed because he's here.
We can proceed. We need the secretary to read number, item number two.
Item number two reads, twenty Camden Street, MPB twenty-four, three ninety-seven slash five, in an R-five zone? Well, hold on. Let's go with item number two. And let's take Herbert Street. Which is one nineteen Herbert Street, which is MPB one eighteen slash nine ten slash two. It's in an RA zone. Gary Winalowski, engineer for Wilson Cordova, owner. Very section four dot one dot four, front yard projection to twenty, where forty-six is permitted, for deck and stairs. Rear yard projection to seven, where forty-six permitted for a stairway.
Okay, sir, please come forward. State your name and your address, please.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Sixto Cordova. I'm Wilson's brother. I come to request for the front deck, side to side of the house. The sizes are ten by sixteen, white.
Mr. Harris, why do we need a variance on this, on this property that's...
If you look at your map, you will see on the right-hand side, follow that dark, the heavy black line is the lot line. And you'll see that it takes a very severe jog in towards the house, which puts the, all of the house in the rear yard setback as well as half of the garage. If that lot line went straight across, it would be a normal-looking lot. But this is an abnormal-looking lot.
Okay, so that pretty much explains the reason for this variance. Do you have anything else, sir?
Mr. Cordova, would you agree that the hardship is the shape of the lot?
I don't really understand what I mean hardship, because, you know...
It's, the shape of your lot, the fact that it does not run in a linear straight line on the rear portion and how it juts in is what is creating the variance requests that are bringing you here. And so I'm just asking you if you agree that you find that back portion of your lot to be irregular?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor of this application? Anyone opposed to this application? This hearing's closed.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. And the reason for my motion would be the unique nature of the lot.
Good motion to approve. We need a second. Motion to approve and we have a second. Mr. Dubois?
With the motion.
Ms. Ferranti?
With the motion.
Mr. Vassino?
With the motion.
Mr. Soto?
With the motion.
I'm with the motion. It's approved, sir. You're all set.
All right, thank you.
Moving right along, any new business? Any new business? Old business? Staff update?
You'd noticed that we do have DPLU administrative summaries. Those are going to be a continuing feature going forward. It just basically gives you the background information in summary, runs through the nature of the proposal and reminds the board the legal definition of hardship.
We like that very much. It's very helpful. Thank you. And our staff update? No, okay. How about acceptance of the minutes from our December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen hearing? Any motion to accept those minutes?
I make a motion to accept. I read through them.
You read them? Favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. Applications for next month, so we only have one carryover here, right? Just item number one?
Gulf and Camden.
I think we have Gulf and Camden.
Okay, we have two, plus whatever, Cambridge, whatever. So we already have three.
And postponed, yep.
Okay. Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Meeting is adjourned.